Padgett in the salute to our flag. Remain standing for our prayer.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today and we just thank you for the gift of the day and the people before us that have been chosen to lead our community. We know that these individuals have been chosen and trusted by us to lead and make the tough decisions that affect our community. Part of our trust in them is trust that they seek your infinite wisdom in their decisions. Lord, we are reminded in this moment that there is nothing we can plan that compares to your perfect plan for our lives. God, we ask for your wisdom, patience, and peace for our city council. As we read in James, we ask that you would lift us up and that we would humble ourselves before you, God. We love you and thank you for this city, this state, and this great country. We ask all this in your son's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor. I'm going to call to order our special Guthrie Economic Development Authority meeting. I'm changing the order a little bit because our first workshop took a little bit longer, so we're moving. We'll pick up the Guthrie Public Works Authority meeting a little bit later on in cycle, but I'm moving to the Special Economic Development Authority meeting of February 4th. The consent agenda items A, B, and C. A is the minutes of the Economic Development Authority meeting of May 2nd, 2017. Sorry. B is the approval of the fiscal year 2020 budget amendments number one and two. And C is the approval of the fiscal year 2019 year-end budget amendment number nine. I believe we had already discussed these at a prior council meeting, but they needed to get, there was some administrative issue and we needed to redo those. So that's why we're revisiting the, those minutes. But we have, anyway, the consent agenda items A, B, and C. I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Submit your votes. See the votes. Unannounced approval of the council on the consent agenda items A, B, and C. With that, our Special Guthrie Economics Development Authority meeting, February 4th, is adjourned. And I am going to call to order our city council meeting of February 4th. We have agenda items A and B. A is the approval of the minutes of February 21st. B is the approval of the special city council workshop held January 23rd. I'll entertain a motion for the consent.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Submit your votes. See the votes. Unannounced approval of the council of consent agenda items A and B. Item three is the discussion, possible action to confirm the mayor's appointment of Robert Kenworthy to the Guthrie Board of Adjustments to fill the unexpired term through May 31st of 2020. You all have received a copy of his application. He is a previous member of the Board of Adjustment. He had resigned because his job was taking him out of state for a period of time. He is now moving back. His family never left, but he will be back in the state within the next 30 to 45 days. Has reapplied and is my nomination then to be appointed to the Board of Adjustments. I'll entertain a motion to approve that appointment.
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes. Let's see the votes. Unannounced approval then of the council to appoint Robert Kenworthy to the Board of Adjustments through the unexpired term, May 31st, 2021. Item number four is now the continuation of the workshop, which we all started earlier today and which some of you have seen on TV. And...
The next item on your list is...
Turned out that way?
That party's over.
That one worked. Was to talk about the strategic priorities that dealt with quality of life that was under tenny and enhance the existing soccer, baseball, and softball facilities. These, this is very rough, that we're just trying to develop some concepts of how to use the existing facilities and maybe improve those and grow those on land that we already own. This land is all owned by City of Guthrie now. Hospitals here, Job Corps here. We have two regulation softball fields here. These two are smaller, but if you make them regulation, you could always put fences in. What we would, what we're looking at is to work with the sports task force. We've not got this refined enough yet to meet with them, but the ideal is to, where the existing fields are, have four regulation fields and enhance the parking and the concession stand. Looking at adding two new fields, which would give us six softball fields in Phase One. Add some additional parking. This road no longer belongs to us and we do not have an easement. We thought that as you come across here, we would look at building a new road to take us out to Highway 33 so that it would be a loop through here. There's a gully down through here, but on the other side, what we could do is parking here, do a foot bridge across the gully for foot traffic, and look at later down the road, another phase to put some additional softball fields. Again, this is very rough concept plan that we're trying to refine. When we get a little more refined, then we'll have a meeting with the Sports Task Force Chairman's standing back there. And Chris. And then to get the Little Leagues out of the floodplain. We're looking at, this is tennis, this is Highway 33. This is the soccer complex and we're trying to improve it in place. Is to, to get out of the cottonwood flats and all the recurring flooding. Look at maybe doing four small fields or eight and under, I believe is the break. And then the larger fields for the older kids, do a combination of four. So you would have eight fields and then look at adding some more lighter. And you would have access off of Highway 33. Again, there is a major drainage through here, but once you get up on this side, it levels out. And so we are exploring those options. On Kewonage Park, we don't own land adjacent to it, but we're looking at some options similar to that. And we're hoping that by using existing facilities and just upgrading and adding to, we can come in with a proposal that would be more palatable to our budget and what we might be able to afford to do. I'd be glad to answer any questions on those. Again, they're very rough concepts.
Would you have a road out on the West College or not?
Over here?
Yes.
Yes, eventually. I don't know if we would put it in at first or just do a turnaround. But yes, eventually.
Because there's a, there's a lake down there on that place and that bridge is not very heavy.
Correct. But eventually, we would probably have a road out there just to have another outlet. But initially, you might just do a turnaround. At some point, we may want to clear this land and add some additional parking for the soccer fields.
With this design as well as the softball, are there going to be any lighted fields?
We would do the same things that we're doing now, so yes.
Okay. And the, and the concession stands, is that the purple? Is that concession or?
Some of them are.
Some are, okay. So there's a number of concession stands, at least potential in there.
Or BYOB.
At this design, yep.
That's what it always was.
Bring your own coffee.
Or bring your own bathroy.
I will point out, these, we are eligible, even though our park project is ongoing with land and water conservation funds. You can have a project ongoing and apply for another one. The deadline for the Land and Water Conservation Fund for this year is July 31st of 2020. So if, and that would be 50/50 match again. So with your blessing, we would like to, whether we do softball first, I mean, we haven't talked to the task force, or do baseball first, at least take one of those projects and develop it enough to be able to submit a application to OTRD for Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant. There's no limit to the size other than last year, they only got $2 million and we got roughly $500,000 of it. They think they will get more money this year, but with your blessing, we would, after we visit with the task force, we would concentrate on one of these and make sure we got an application in by July for the Land and Water Conservation Grant.
What do you think the engineering on something like that would be? Any idea?
No, Brian, I don't.
I mean, because we had some plans before, I mean, could we?
Some of it will duplicate, some of it won't.
So are you looking for a motion from us?
It's not an action item. All we're looking for is a concurrence. Enough heads nod or, you know, support.
Yeah, we need to get something.
On the debate of engineering firms, but this might be a project that you could do RFP because they're not tying into any current infrastructure that they have knowledge of. This is raw land that's out west of town that really has no ties to any infrastructure that we currently have or they would have documented. So if we, and it's also something that's totally out of the spectrum. It's not roads, it's not bridges, it's not water infrastructure, it's not wastewater.
That's why I mentioned, we already had some engineering, I think, on the other one, didn't we?
Yes.
So if you wanted to do it.
The only thing I would suggest is possibility, and not to be argumentative, is if we're going to get an application in by July, it may limit us if we go through a selection process. So maybe what we might want to do is say if we do softball, stay with the firm that we're doing it now and get that application in. The one that we don't do this year, then we could work with the proposal process for that one. If that would be okay. Because it would take some time to go through that selection process.
I understand. Okay, all right.
We will get with the task force once we get this a little further refined. Tenny, do you want to explain the road closures in Cottonwood Flats?
What we're looking at, this is kind of a overlay of Cottonwood Flats area. This is, these roads have been closed in the past at one time and then reopened during the Muffet and Sons event. We'll be working with Dan through the process and of course, the council with getting approval to close Washington between 8th and 7th, leaving 7th Street as a through street. And then also closing Washington between 7th and 5th, leaving 5th as a through street. And then that section right down there, there's two blocks on 6th Street that we would close between College and Logan. That would give us a larger green space down in that one four-square block area. And then also the area on 4th Street between, the area between the ballfields down there. It's currently closed with all the silt and debris and stuff from the flood on it now. And the one block on Warner from 5th Street down to 4th. We don't really see no purpose from the area on 4th Street no more. It does not, used to, it used to go underneath the viaduct. There, it leads to nowhere down in there now. So it would just eliminate roughly 10, 12 blocks of road that we currently maintain off of our maintenance schedule.
So is that the purpose of closing them, just to not have to maintain them anymore? Is that the?
For the most part, yeah. There, the portion between the ballfields, there's really no purpose. They serve no purpose at all at this point. There, they are no longer through streets as far as coming underneath the viaduct where it used to come under and come out around where Teeter's Oil was. You no longer can get through that area at all. And we had just looked at the area down there on Washington and the one block just west of that, all is just closing it.
And then with the flooding that you have in that area maintaining them is difficult.
So what is our vision for this area? Anything, any discussion at all about what it could potentially be? With the flooding ramifications, I know it limits what we can do considerably, but...
Weekend concerts is what it looks like.
We'd love to see a balloon festival down there.
Well, I was going to mention the balloon festival.
I think we can continue with the, you know, we have the, currently have the Bluegrass down there and several other events that have reached out to us. We had a dirt bike event that was held down there. Several people have been reaching out to us for different events for that area. All of our Little League soccer teams, they practice down in that area. So again, more green space that we can provide for that. It keeps them off of the actual fields. For wear and tear on our fields, it provides a very nice spot for them to practice.
Those streets that you're proposing, Washington, are those curb and gutters, are those just ditch streets?
They're just ditch streets. They're currently gravel with very minimal drainage. I mean, your road is pretty much your drainage down in that area with it being in the floodplain.
So are we going to bring in topsoil and grass it over, or are we just going to let it be abandoned gravel road?
We wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to bring in any topsoil with it being in the floodplain unless we was to remove it from the existing floodplain. So we would, we would look at possibly...
You could grade over it.
Blading some of the existing sides, shoulders from both sides and smoothing the area up that way.
You could actually cover the roads and grass them that way, right?
We'd recover what gravel's on the road and move them to the adjacent roads and take our blade and blade existing grass.
But we would try to get grass there within the limitations of the...
Right.
Yeah.
Eventually, it would be grown over.
Yes.
And the track team, track and stuff, a lot of stuff goes on down there.
Yes, we, I would say we roughly have probably close to 20 to 25 events held down in the Cottonwood Flats from different track meets.
Which mainly meets grass.
Yes. The Little Britches Rodeo, they use that area. Bluegrass uses it, Track and Field uses it. Almost every one of our Little League teams practice down there. Several of the football teams practice down there. So it gets a lot of use.
So, do we have, what do we need from us? A motion on this, I guess?
We're still in work, this is now a workshop.
So this is the workshop.
What we will do is, the first step is just like anybody else that wants to close a street, we'll have to go to the planning commission, present to them what we want to do. They would make a recommendation to the city council and then the city council would adopt a resolution or an ordinance to close the streets.
Will you?
We'll go through the normal process.
Nobody owns any of the land on these streets anymore?
No. Every bit of the property adjacent to the roads that we're looking at closing is city-owned.
One last item on the general fund side of things. Under, at our retreat, we talked about a special study, analysis of options for the existing swim and pool in Highland Park. We have not got started on that, but we want to keep it on our list and keep pushing it. So that's everything in tennis area that's not more or less day-to-day operations. To go over.
Okay, all right. Great report, Leroy and Tenny. Obviously, a lot to do, lot going, a lot going on. And unfortunately, a lot of expenditure of money, but I think that's all a part of moving forward. So again, good report. That takes care of item number four on the city council agenda. Item number five, city manager report. Well, aren't you going to go through the GPWA or not? I'm coming back to it. I'll get back there. City manager report, okay. Number six is comments by city council. Councilman Bathroyd.
Actually, we had a good meeting. I think we had a good meeting the other night with council members and I was proud to be part of that. And that's it.
Okay. Councilman Case?
Tell everybody to be safe. It's cold tonight, so take care of yourself.
Councilman Long?
I also thought we had a good meeting. I wanted to compliment Steve's wife on a good salad and lasagna.
You didn't believe that I made that, huh?
Well...
Now, we know you made the bread. I did. Thank you. I'll, I'm sure that she's watching, so.
And I also just wanted to, again, welcome Cheryl aboard on the council, and I know that creates a few holes in our, some of our boards. So I wanted to encourage people to put in their applications for any open boards that we might have. And that's it.
Hey, Councilman Taylor?
I'll deal with what he just said too, but the dinner was good and yes, I think we made some headway and that's what we're wanting to do and see if we can't get ourselves together. Thank you staff for what you all do. I know Chris and his staff's going to have a real fun time trying to figure out what they want to do on this, on the softball, baseball complex, but I think it's a great idea, so we'll see what happens. But, and then tomorrow, I guess you're going to drive down to South Florida, Oklahoma. So, yeah, tomorrow's going to be a snowy day, so if you're going somewhere, either go early or whatever, or stay home. Otherwise, Don will be out pulling you in or pulling you out, whichever the case may be.
Councilman Padgett?
Well, one thing about, excuse me, going near the last, everything's been said. Be safe.
I heard a rumor.
Yes.
I heard the mayor was going to have the department heads out for lasagna next.
Sue, are you watching this?
That was a rumor.
It's coming through the screen right now.
I think we missed channel.
Councilman Channel.
Oh, okay.
Stay home tomorrow. I want to stay home, stoke the fire. If you guys will stay home, I can stay home. I never heard our, our next date for the next dinner. I missed that too.
Sue, it's getting tough in here. We're working on it, we're working on it.
Some kind of grilled items next time would be good.
Okay. I revise the menu.
You can keep the salad, though. That was good.
Yeah, the salad was really good.
Thank you, good. I'm sure the public is wondering what in the heck was going on there.
Oh, they're really going on.
Anyway, it's very good. Yeah, James mentioned that we have got some vacancies in some of our boards and commissions. It's on, it's on the city website. Go to the City Guthrie website. But we have vacancy in forestry, in our park board. We have one that, in our airport, our regional airport. We have one in planning and a couple more that are coming up due at the end of March, I believe it is. And library, same thing. Some, we have some terms that are expiring, some positions that are expiring. Or the terms are expiring in March. I believe that there's a couple in library. And the same thing with our Historic Preservation Commission. So a number of opportunities for you, the viewing audience, as well as the people here in the room, to get, get more engaged with the community, have direct input into where we're going and, and all of the activities that were addressed here in the last two hours. So anyway, lots of good opportunity there. Congratulations to everybody that was involved with Taste and Tell this weekend. It was a huge success and I think, I know I added a few inches and it wasn't from Sue's salad. With that, ladies and gentlemen, our city council meeting is adjourned. And we are going to go back now and pick up our... Guthrie Public Works Authority meeting of February 4th. Public comments, community announcements, recognitions. Do we have anything?
Yeah, we got one.
Okay, Don?
It's about the salad?
Yeah. You're getting a rubber ducky.
And Bathroyd's been worrying to death about this box. I'll leave it. But the mayor had our, as y'all heard before, he had our little team building meeting. And so I got something to present him here as a recognition for doing that. But you got to open it up and you got to show our, you know.
Okay, all right. Here we go, folks. Why are you moving back?
It's the exploding box.
Remember those can of beans where the snake would come out?
Yeah.
Oh, it's a mug. Cool.
Oh, it's a mug? It says, "I can't be held responsible for what my face does when you talk." Is that meant for you or for me?
I'm not turning it so that it faces James.
This will be a traveling trophy? A traveling mug?
I debated on that or an eight by 10 of that picture that I have, but I thought this would be more suitable.
Thank you, Lauren.
Good job, Don. I noticed you did your colors so well.
Yeah, you're eating white.
Yes, you will all have opportunity here. Okay. Let's see, Aaron. Where did Aaron go?
I don't know.
She was out there. Would you check and just see if Aaron Brown is out there? Oh, okay. She left. Gone? Okay, all right. We'll pick that up later. Okay. So now we're moving into the continuation on the public work side of the workshop that we spent the first hour with earlier this evening. So we're back, Leroy, I guess it's back on your, your bailiwick. Oh. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Item number three, consent agenda. A is the approval of the Minutes Public Works Authority of January 21st. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Submit your votes. See the votes. Unannounced approval then of consent agenda item A, which is the Public Works Authority Minutes. Thank you for that pickup. Kim, now, now, item number four is the continuation of our earlier meeting for the Public Works Authority. Leroy?
There's not many of the slides. There we go. We're back in business. My mouse had died. The first one under the Public Works Authority is the CMOM project. And for those that aren't familiar, don't remember, CMOM stands for Capacity Management Operation Maintenance Program. Back in 2010... Back in 2010, the city adopted a resolution and there's an eight dollar per month C-MOM fee on all of the utility bills. And we utilize that to replace sewer lines. We've already completed the one for 2019. And some of this depends on how much funds are available. But in 2020, we're looking at the sewer line on Locust to Pine on Perkins, a 700 feet, about $80,000 estimate. And then in 2021, Walker Drive in Oklahoma, the Noble on Blake. And then in 2022, Springer to Perkins by the Fire Department and Oak to Elma, Washington. And 23, Pine to Drexel. And then 24, North Seventeenth from Oklahoma to Cleveland and Noble from 13th to 14th. Is kind of our master plan of what we would use those C-MOM funds for. The next one is a big one, and it's our wastewater treatment plant. And of course, the last estimate we have dates back a little bit. But roughly $16.9 million to design and build the wastewater treatment facility. I know back in 2001, 2002 area timeframe, when I was in Coffeyville, we built a new wastewater treatment plant. Coffeyville's about 12,000 people and we spent a little over $10,000 or $10 million on that plant. That's 10 years ago, so that number's probably not that.
Might be low.
We will, we will update this and we will look at some value engineering to see if we can shave any of it. And our thought process now is we will refine the cost estimate. We will start the process to get this new plant permitted. So that when we're ready to start, we will have the permit for it. We will start the process of securing the right of way that we need for the utility lines. And then the next step, once we have the cost estimate updated, will to look at our revenue stream versus the debt service to pay for this and how that might work. And if we have to pay interest only, would it be cheaper while we're waiting for the water plant debt to be retired? We'll look at inflation and if it's cheaper to go ahead and for a few years pay interest and the inflation would outrun the interest, then we may go ahead with it. Otherwise, we would recommend waiting as long as we can before we pull the plug to build it. There is, so that's kind of where we're at on that project. And then recently at a city council meeting, you all approved this moving forward on a holding pond, sludge removal and a de-watering box. Addressing the sludge at the existing plant is something we have to do anyway. And then the de-watering box, of course, is something that could be moved to the new plant. And we think that this will make it easier for us to get our current plant re-permitted to buy us some time while we work through the details on the new wastewater treatment plant. And then the dam at Guthrie Lake, Country Club Lake? Tenny, I'll let you address that one.
So our dams are, they're evaluated annually. We have recently brought this inspection up from a fair to a satisfactory. We still have some maintenance that we need to do out there on the end of the spillway, down where the water comes around, right off the toe of the spillway, there's some major erosion occurring. What we're looking at doing is trying to in-house haul salvaged drip wrap that we have on hand out there and placing it in that void. We don't have any estimates or anything like that on the project. But by just getting a real good clear, clearing on the dam itself and we recently cleared the spillway, the concrete spillway portion of it off and sealed all the cracks. The only thing left with that project really is the adding the drip wrap to the toe of the spillway.
How deep is that lake? It's not that deep, is it?
Jeff, I'd have to look on the inspection report to see what the actual depth was.
So what's the story on that lake? We don't have access, that's, we own it, but we.
We lease it to the country club.
The country club and we don't get access to it.
I don't think that's in our lease.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I don't know.
Some things that we don't have slides on to finish up. Our water tires, we've been doing five water tires? Am I adding one?
Four.
Four. The, we've been doing some improvements to them, but we would like to plan improvements that would extend the life of those water tires for at least another 20 years. And so we're working on that and we're gonna try to roll that in. At the same time, we finance the wastewater treatment plant to finance the improvements to make sure that our water tires and our water system have at least 20 more years of life expectancy in them. And so we're looking at what we need to do to do that. The, as part of the priorities that you identified this year was to apply for a Oklahoma Water Resources Board grant to do some repairs to the spillway at Guthrie Lake. Phase one of that is predominantly geotechnical work and engineering. Our, it's 105,000, our share's 37,000. We're not exactly sure what phase two will be as far as construction. But at one time, it looked like, depending on what we're gonna do, it may be like a $1.5 million project and our share would be about 500,000. We've not identified a funding source for that yet. But we kinda need to decide exactly what we're gonna do in phase one before we get too far in determining how we would fund phase two.
Leroy, one thing you might add to that project. This project, part of this grant was, goes back to the, what I call is an RFQ, request for qualifications for engineering. We did go through that process with this project and that was sent out to three different firms. Myers was one of the three firms and I, it doesn't come to mind the other two. But we only received one, one firm responded with that RFQ. So, and Myers was the only firm that responded to that deadline. But we did reach out to other firms, that was part of this specific grant.
And the last item, another study that is indicated as special studies at our retreat back in August is to do a 10-year utility service master plan for our utilities to talk about what rate structure would we have to have to make sure we replace our water lines, whether it's over 30 years, over 20, our sewer lines maintain our water plant, our wastewater plant. We've not initiated that study yet. And so that's kind of an update on everything that is in Tenny's area. I guess some feedback we'd like is, do you wanna do a similar workshop for each department? Not all of them will be quite as long as listed as Tenny's. And what level of detail do you want on those similar to this? What's your desires going for?
I think the workshop was pretty informative and it keeps us in the loop of what's going on and we have that time. I'd be open to invest in my time and hearing it on a department level.
I thought the presentations were very good. A good capsule of opportunities that we have. And some idea of the cost involved, some idea of the timing involved, as well as the identification of where there's additional funding. I mean, anytime we can get 80/20 is wonderful, 50/50 is probably more realistic. And, but I think it focuses not only on our investment, but how we can, how we can get other funds with us matching and therefore get more bang for the buck for the citizens. So I think it's, I think it was really positive. I would, I would look forward to having each of the departments do something in similar and in similar depth, from my perspective. Other, other comments, council?
I think you said it. It's more information than we've had in the last six months.
It's got good, got good head nodding all over, so move forward with that.
I just think we need $50 million and I think other than that we.
It's all about the money. Always comes back to that.
I do have one question, Leroy, do you have any idea what it costs us to put together all the information like we did today? What's it cost the city to do that?
Well, they have to do it anyway.
This presentation and what Tenny's done, just more gray hairs on the old city managers, all that cost you.
Alright.
But they have to do this anyway.
Right, I understand. So I mean, we did all this in-house.
So who puts together this slideshow? Am I looking, am I looking at the person that puts together?
Unless you cross eyes, you're.
Okay, well, well done.
Thank you. And, and you know, we're moving in some new directions. When you look at the forms we're using to track the projects and doing these slideshows and so eventually, department heads will probably put their own slideshows together. But right now, I assist in putting the slideshows together and stuff. And so we kinda tag-team it as far as putting this together. Probably be the same format with most of the other departments now. Some of them may be able to do their own PowerPoint.
See, I think it's great because it keeps, it keeps everybody from, you know, not going to this out of sight, out of mind type mindset. Not that anybody is, but we all have a nature to tend to do that.
Well, we wonder what he does all day.
Very, okay, very good. Well, I think you've got some homework then. And I apologize that we had to kind of move around a little bit on the, on the agenda to make, put everything in proper context, but I think we have. And with that, ladies and gentlemen, we're adjourned. Thank you very much.